Here we go. Perfect. All right. Well, let's do this. Welcome, everybody. Lovely to see all of you. I am going to call us to order. It is 2:05 PM. And this is a special meeting of the Alston Library District Board of Trustees. It is our capital project discussion slash joint committee meeting. So thank you all for being here. We're going to do sort of our standard open meeting stuff here at the top. And then I will kind of explain how the next piece goes. So we'll start with our roll call for our trustees. Trustee Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Capel.
Here.
Trustee Cervantes.
Here.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Here.
Thank you so much. All right. So the agenda, as you see it in your package, is posted online, of course, as always, for anybody who wants to download a copy. So do I hear any requests to reorder anything on the agenda? Change anything? If not, I'd like to request a motion to adopt the agenda as it appears.
I move we adopt the agenda.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. This is going to be the only vote we take today. Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capel.
Hi.
Trustee Cervantes.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Hi.
Thank you so much. Oh, and an I vote for me. All right. So we've got our agenda adopted. As far as I'm aware, and Diego, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, we don't at this time have any public comment on non-agenda items. Is that correct?
That's correct so far. Okay. Look out.
Perfect. All right. Do we have any comment on any agendized items? I should have asked that, too. Okay, doesn't sound like it. So that's fine. All right. So let's talk a little bit about how today is going to work. So this is a sort of a different format. And we are really looking forward to a great discussion. So today's is kind of more of a workshop, a roundtable discussion than it is like one of our regular board meetings where we vote on stuff. So we're not taking any more votes today. We're not authorizing any action, taking any action. Today is an opportunity for all of the folks who've been working on various different aspects of our big capital projects undertaking to all get together and have a conversation about where we are and where we're headed. So with that, I'm actually going to hand it over to our district director, Nikki Winslow, and she's going to facilitate the rest of our conversation today. Just like when we normally have our board meetings, do please either raise your hand, you know, gesticulate wildly, use the raise hand feature so that she can acknowledge you and we can have a sort of orderly conversation. We're not talking all over each other, but we'll have plenty of opportunity for some good discussion and good conversation. So with that, I will hand it over to you, Nikki.
All right. Thank you so much, Katie. And I'll try to scroll occasionally through everybody because I can't see everybody on my one screen. All right. So good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all so much for taking the time to meet with us and move this whole process forward. I'd also like to thank Diego right off the bat because he was able to get all of us together at the same time on an afternoon, which I think is massively impressive. So as Katie mentioned, today's going to be more of a workshop than a formal meeting of the board. We really wanted to bring everyone together, and this is going to be the first of many discussions like this. And again, as Katie mentioned, we're not going to be making any decisions, but rather talking about the roles of each of these committees and how that's going to work in terms of interacting with the Board of Trustees and the community to provide information about not only the bond issuance, but also the building projects moving forward. And really, like, the goal of all of this is to set ourselves up for success right from the start so that we're being transparent and open, and everybody understands what we're doing moving forward. All right. So as all of you are aware, as especially the board members, everybody's wearing a lot of different hats right now. So you might be a board member, you also might be in charge of one of these committees. This is going to be a somewhat complex process. So again, we just want to make sure that we're reaching consensus around the best practices in terms of how we are having information flow between the two committees, as well as all of the consultants and vendors we're going to be working with in the next couple of years. And just making sure, like I said, that we're all on the same page. So let's just go into doing some quick intros. Katie, I'll pass it back to you for the board.
Okay, perfect. So board members, if you would, and I know we all know each other, but we're welcoming today some of our vendors or advisors, some committee members, and it's possible that not everybody has had a chance to meet everybody yet. So if you would, trustees, just introduce yourself and remind us which committee you're serving on. So my name is Katie Clark. I am a trustee and also the current board president, and I am a member of the ad hoc facilities committee. Terry, I'll toss it to you next.
I'm Terry Andrews, trustee, and I am the chair of the Community Facilities District Committee, and which we have five members total, including Rushmore Cervantes, and also three members from the community. We're blessed to have them, Amy Lifeard, Kim Kenny, and Jim Vitale.
Perfect. Thanks. Okay, Jason.
Jason Capel, trustee, and also chair of the ad hoc facilities committee. And then after the trustees introduce themselves, if our team from Raklin Partners can also introduce themselves.
We will. We're getting there. Perfect. Rushmore, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Katie. Rushmore Cervantes, also trustee. I am on the Community Facilities District Committee, as well as the chair of the Budget Committee. I serve along with Camila Wilkerson. Thank you.
Thank you. And Camila.
Hello, everyone. My name is Camila Wilkerson, and I am, of course, a trustee and the chair of the redistricting committee, which I am partnered with Katie Clark.
All right. Thank you so much. So those are our trustees. Trustees, thank you so much for that. And now we will go to our two committees. So Terry sort of anticipated this a little bit. But Terry, if maybe you could ask your committee members, as well as the folks who are working alongside the CFD committee, to introduce themselves.
Sure. I'm not sure they're all on the call today.
I see, I see Kim and I see Amy. I don't know if Jim's with us.
Okay. So I will turn it over to them to introduce themselves. Amy, let's start with you.
Thank you. I'm Amy Lifeard. I'm on the Community Facilities District Committee as a community member. I'm also a member of the Alton Unit Town Council.
And Kim?
Hi, this is Kim Kenny. I am a member of this committee. I also serve on the Pasadena Unified School Board. Thanks.
And I'm not sure Jim Vitale's on the line today, but Jim is the third citizen member of our committee. He's a local architect with his own firm, and he's doing a great job of chipping in on architectural questions and other things as we discuss our way through that committee. And then on the ALD side, do you want me to keep going, Katie?
Keep going. You're absolutely doing great.
Nikki is doing yeoman's work with keeping us all together, and I have to concur with the praise we should bestow on Diego for getting all of us together at these inconvenient times. That includes a lot of meetings and extra meetings on the CFD committee that he's put together for us. Nicole Fabry's done a terrific job for us analyzing things and being on our work teams as we look at different issues and hiring and recommending for hire different pieces of the CFD process that we'll go through. And then we also have bond disclosure council from Best Best and Krieger. I'll let Nora O'Brien introduce herself.
Hi. So your counsel on the financing.
All right. I think you're breaking up, Nora. Sorry.
A little bit. The last person.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Nora O'Brien. I don't know how much cut out, but we, Best Best and Krieger will be serving as bond and disclosure council on the financing for the CFD, for the special tax bonds.
And then the last person I'd like to introduce is Doug Anderson, who is our municipal advisor. He's on the call today. Doug, I do not know if your associates, Michael and Brandon, are on. If they are, please have them introduce themselves, too. But I'll let you go first.
Thank you, and good afternoon. This is Doug Anderson with Urban Futures. My associates are not on with me today, but they will be assisting with the bond issue once we get rolling with that. We will be the municipal advisor on the bond issue, otherwise known as financial advisor, and we're looking forward to working with everyone on this important financing.
All right. Thank you so much, Terry and Doug. Now I'll turn it over to Jason if you want to introduce the ad hoc facilities committee and associates.
Sure. So everybody's met myself and our current board president, Katie, who's putting in a tremendous amount of work with the ad hoc committee in addition to all of her other duties. Nikki, who used to think she was a librarian, our great director, is also helping out. We're lucky to also have our facilities manager, Jonathan Arrevalo, who, if you've been by either the libraries recently, you've seen, he's already been driving quite a bit of amazing work on the buildings. Then one of the first things we did was the board approved hiring Raklin Partners to help us through this entire process as project management. I think some of us thought we were going to get a single project manager when we started all this, and we now have an entire amazing team. So I'll let them introduce themselves in a second. And then the one thing we'll talk a little bit about today, but isn't really formed yet, but we will also be working on establishing what for now we are calling a community-focused group to ensure that we have community input throughout every step of the process. So Richard, Andrew, and Jennifer, if you guys want to just quickly introduce yourselves from Raklin Partners.
Yeah, certainly. My name is Richard Ingrassi. I'm the managing partner with Raklin Partners, and we perform program management and construction management. Certainly, this team does. Our firm also does have an architectural branch, and so we're very sensitive to your needs on all fronts. Andrew, Jennifer, introduce yourselves, please.
Sure, I'll go first. My name is Andrew Allman. I'm a lead accredited licensed architect. I'm with Raklin Partners for 17-plus years, assisting numerous districts, very similar to this, through their bond programs. And so I'm just kind of excited to be working with this team. Jennifer?
Sorry, was muted. I'm Jennifer Pearson with Raklin Partners. I'm also licensed architect and program manager.
And Jennifer, I'm glad I was not the first person to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you so much, everyone. So as you can see, we have a lot of players on this team and with lots of different responsibilities. So again, moving into roles and responsibilities, and I did want to point out, one of the differences between the committees as well is our CFD committee is a standing committee, meaning all of the meetings are held openly. We have to post agendas ahead of time and livestream those meetings on YouTube. Whereas the ad hoc committee, the facilities committee, is not held to the same brown act standards and can meet without it being as an open meeting. So I did want to point that out as well. So again, like, how did we get here, right? As all of you are aware, we passed Measure Z, the ballot measure, last November. And next steps were, okay, Katie appointed an ad hoc facilities committee and a CFD committee. We composed those, but then the question has been, what do each of those committees, what are they responsible for? What are their roles in terms of the building projects? And that's why we wanted to bring everybody together to establish that. Nothing has been set in stone yet. What we're going to be doing is presenting the place that we currently are, not, again, not making any decisions today, but also having conversation with all of you around what that's going to look like, as well as what we think the community members are going to want to see throughout this process for the next couple of years. So as you can see, this is how we are currently interacting. So this is the capital programs information flow. It does, as you can see, most things are flowing through me, right in the middle I am. So again, I'm serving on both of the CFD committee as well as the ad hoc committee, and then reporting to the Board of Trustees, obviously, each month, and then interacting with the variety of vendors. And I want to point, or the consultants. And I want to point out that this is going to grow. I mean, just today, we did scoring around hiring a bond underwriter, which is going to be a necessary step to move forward with the bond issuance process, and Doug will talk about more of that later. But again, we just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page in terms of, like, if there's questions from one consultant to another, the best way for that information flow to happen. And again, typically, that's going to work through myself or some of the other staff members, but you know, I'll act as the conduit to people passing information that's needed to make sure that the program or these processes are successful moving forward. Because as you can see, we have parallel processes happening at the same time. Not only are we embarking on two building renovation projects, but we're also having to do a bond issuance, and both of those things are interrelated and need to inform each other, but are kind of, you know, happening on separate tracks. So again, this is where we're at right now. Again, this chart going to grow, but we wanted to make sure everybody was aware of, like, how to communicate amongst, you know, these various groups. So now I'm going to have us go to the next slide, and I'll pass it off to Raklin to talk about the project roadmap.
Okay, thanks, Nikki. I will handle that. So this is our project roadmap. It's really just a high-level overview of the tasks and activities that we see as necessary to get us to a point where we can begin the design phase. So as you can see, we have several simultaneous tracks here, but I want to talk first about the top track there in orange. This track begins with initial programming, which is what we're in the process of doing now. This involves reviewing the existing studies and reports that have already been done, and using those and our discussions with our ad hoc committee to identify the baseline scope of work, the minimum work that needs to be done under this bond. So then that leads us to the next group of tasks. Starting at the bottom, there are cost estimating. So once we've sort of finalized our baseline scope, we'll just be confirming the costs of those to lead us into the next step. At the same time, we'll be working to establish that focus group, the community focus group that Nikki mentioned earlier. And we expect that simultaneously, the CFD committee will be, or our consultants will be working to establish the bond sale structure. And all of those will help us into the next step where we will define individual baseline projects and budgets based on the scope that we've identified. So whether that's two projects, one for each library, or many projects that are phased, we'll be determining that at that point. And then, once we've done that, we will see if there's any budget left for any discretionary projects. And if there is, then we'll move on to the secondary programming where we will identify potential discretionary scope, estimate the cost of that, and then define some project package options that we will then present to the community stakeholders. With all of that information, we'll move on into developing a master project schedule based on the district priorities and cash flow, and at that point, be able to match our projects to architects and move into design. So that's our first track. Our second track there begins with reviewing the ALD standard contracts and RFQs, which we have done. And we're in the process of developing our first RFQs for the some miscellaneous vendors, but first I want to talk about the track there for the architectural services selection. So down the road a little ways, we'll be issuing an RFQ for architectural services. We may select one or multiple architects, depending on how things are going with our programming and whether we think we're going to need more than one. And like I said before, match projects to architects and move into design. On our third track, we've got the other vendors. These include things like seismic evaluation, hazardous materials, consultants, surveyors, that sort of thing. So we are working on our first two for seismic evaluation and hazardous materials consultants, which we will plan to issue once we have authorization from the Board of Trustees later this month. And so then we'll have multiple other RFQs, which we will sort of stagger along the way, and we'll select our vendors, order the reports, and have those available for design. And lastly, we have the facility standards track. The first item there is just determining whether we need facility standards. So we'll be working with the ALD on that. And if it is determined that we need a set of standards, then we'll work with them to develop those and issue them to our architectural teams for use in design.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. So again, that's just to get us to design. Sounds like a lot, right? So we're very grateful to have Raklin on board, kind of steering our ship to make sure that we're being able to accomplish all of that in coordination with the bond issuance process. As you can see, they're definitely parallel. We need to know how much money we're going to have to be able to determine how much work can be done and what that work looks like, take it to the community before we move into the design phase, and then go from there. So we have a lot of work ahead of us in the next couple of months, for sure. So now we wanted to open up the floor and just really, like, have a discussion around what the committee members and consultants think about these questions that we present to you. So I'll just read through them quickly, and we don't have to take them in order, but I definitely want to open the floor for discussion, for your thoughts and feedback on these questions. So what are the core responsibilities for each committee, being the CFD and the ad hoc facilities committee? What role does each committee have in relationship to the Board of Trustees, the overarching group? What role does each committee have in relationship to the other committee? Is there any potential overlap of scope or other questions that we can clarify now? And do we foresee any potential obstacles that we can plan for or discuss now? So I'm opening up the floor. What are people's thoughts?
Would it be good to start for, I guess, Terry and I to give a very brief, like, here's what we think the responsibilities of our committee are?
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
Okay. I'll try and give the most simplest one possible. I think Jennifer's presentation covered it in a lot of detail, but you know, I think for the ad hoc committee, our role is really exactly what Jennifer talked about. It's working with the project management team from start to finish, just to make sure that the work is on track, that we have a clear plan to as efficiently as, efficiently as possible, get the various RFQs that need to be approved in front of the full board for discussion and approval. And then you saw there, you know, at some point, we will be responsible for ensuring, you know, engagement with the broader community on, when you're trying to get input on how we handle any of these kind of discretionary decisions we may or may not need to make on additional work to include in this project.
Yeah, I think that's a good summary to start with, Jason. Thank you. Terry, did you want to talk about the CFD committee's role in your mind at this point?
Yeah. The example I've been using, and you've all heard it several times, has been that I envision the CFD committee as being a committee that sort of raises the money or corrals the money that's coming to us to the sale of these bonds. And the facilities committee is responsible for spending on the design phase and all the other things. So that, to me, is still kind of a valid point, a breaking point, if you will, a demarcation point for our two committees. But as we go along and we see, we interview new vendors, and we break off into our work groups for different positions and so on, I'm also beginning to see a clearer role for the CFD committee to be not in charge of, but certainly facilitate transparency to the community. For example, one of the services that is mentioned in the CFD administrator contract that we have yet to sign, but that we're examining right now, has to do with just dealing with the public. And Nikki, I remember you told me a few weeks ago that Nicole had been getting bombarded with calls from the public about what's going on. I got a new a new lien on my tax bill. Where'd that come from? Well, these groups, some of these agencies will actually take care of that part for us. They'll get back to citizens who have a gripe about their tax bill, and they say some of the proposals they'll deal with in 24 hours. So there's an infrastructure that's developing within the purview of the CFD committee that can handle the transparency to the community about what's going on. I think we really need to move that along in a thoughtful way. So that's one area I see us doing, doing some work in. You know, the flip side to that, to me, to the transparency part of the facilities committee, and this is just me riffing here a little bit, is that the transparency about how their improvements will be made sort of needs to come from the facilities committee. So there's going to be a lot of jockeying, I'm sure, with the public about, well, it should have this kind of a, you know, an entryway, and this kind of a disabled improvement, et cetera. So all those things that need to get out to the community about how we're going to develop things, and it's going to go along. Really, I think it should come from the, from the facilities group. So, you know, I guess I see us as more of a business arm of this whole thing, the CFD committee, kind of a, and then again, accounting arm, if you will, making sure that all these things get done properly from a procedure point of view, but the building part of it gets turned over to CFD, I'm sorry, to facilities. So those are just my initial impressions, and they're growing every day as we see more and more, Nikki, as you know, more and more proposals for contracting and so on.
I would just add, Terry just made me remember, there's one incredibly important person that we forgot to introduce that is important to everything we're doing, and that's Chloe. Because I think on the transparency side, that's what triggered my brain is, you know, especially once the construct, like, that whole piece starts, you know, having a piece of our library website that has very up-to-date information on everything that's happening, and a lot of that work is going to, is going to fall to Chloe. So I wanted to make sure we recognized her today, too.
I see Amy's hand is up.
Thank you. I had a question that crosses over, I guess, between the two different CFD and the ad hoc facilities group. Will there be any impact on our budgetary work related to the fact that the Alton Domain Library is a historically significant architectural structure? I know that it's, I don't believe it's under the Mills Act or anything like that, but I'm just wondering how there might be a necessity going forward to have some good communication between the two groups around that issue, depending on how we want to renovate.
Andrew, do you want to take that on, Katie, or do you want?
Well, I mean, I think I'm going to defer to our expert team from Raklin, but I think what I'll say, just very briefly, in answer to your question, Amy, is that, you know, the the historic and very specific architecture of the main library is something that has been at the front of mind for the entire process and will continue to be, I think, a driving factor. It's, for example, one of the reasons that we're prioritizing some of those seismic studies right out of the gate to some of those seismic studies right out of the gate to to see what we're what we're looking at. One of the things that as a Board of Trustees we have elected to do is to kind of meet all the requirements that would be required to add the main library to the register of historic places, but haven't yet pulled the trigger on that. So we're we're approaching all of this, I think, with an eye that's very sensitive to the fact that it's historic building. And we want to be consistent with the, of course, with the style and with the unique architecture and with the the approach that that boy George took. And at the same time, you know, make the make the improvements that are that are required, certainly by law, but also that we that we need to do to make it make it accessible and usable. But I'll I'll hand it to to our our friends at Racklin to to answer that from a better, from a better informed position as as actual expert.
Well, I'm not sure I could even add much more to that. I think that was a great sort of summary of what we're doing. So we're definitely using it as a filter in every aspect of of how we're going to go forward with this project. A lot of it's really going to come down eventually to the architect that we hire, and that will be one of the main specific aspects of choosing that architect will be the historic nature of this facility and is it somebody that can deliver the scope of work in a way that is that doesn't interfere with that nature and really sort of, if anything, makes it even more accessible to the community, makes it more of an impact going forward. And so really, it's just kind of going to be a filter in an ongoing thing that we review at every step of the way. I'm not sure if that's answering all of your question or not, but at this stage, it's definitely something that we consider, no matter what decision we make.
I think the the focus of the question was hoping that you all would respond in that way, that that the architectural significance of the building would be, as you put it, a filter through which the analysis of the project would flow. I was just wondering whether there might be down the road, and this, we don't need to spend any more time on this, but whether the choice of materials, the choice of the approach to the renovation and the transformation of the space to make it more accessible and more usable, might have some specific impacts on a budget that might be different were we working with a building that didn't have that historic significance, right? In terms of matching things and that kind of thing. It's really, it's really a, because I'm on the CFD, and I think our job is to really take very good care of our budget and to do the right thing by our community regarding the bond measure.
Right, of course, yeah, we're going to be stewards of the community's money all the way through, but you are absolutely right. I mean, the historic nature of this building, the fact that it's fairly structurally, you know, complex, it really is going to impact the budget. And compared to like if you were in a more modern building, you know, that didn't really have any historical significance. So we are going to have to, you know, continue to look at that and review that with all of our budgets kind of going forward and then reviewing some of the, you know, the suggestions from the structural engineer or the hazmat hygienist about how we're going to do some of this work, you know, and still be delicate. And is there another option that maybe we can use that might be, you know, I'm not going to say less expensive, but it might have less of an impact, you know, on the nature of the structure as well. And so, yeah, we are definitely looking at that and it definitely will impact the budget, I think. Especially the accessibility. It is kind of complex between the half floors and everything else, and so that is definitely going to impact it.
Thank you. Rushmore, see your hand.
Oh, thank you, Nikki. And, you know, Amy had a similar question that I did, and it kind of goes from, my question's a little bit different, though, as far as the the overall approach and and the process over the course of the two-year period that we have construction projects going on, there's going to be an initial cost estimate for all of the work in totality, based on the approaches we want to take. And of course, then having secondary cost estimates on if there's any money left over. My concern is just with the overall cost material going up, such as lumber and other materials, making sure that we've got a appropriate amount of escalation in our calculations to accommodate the rise in labor and materials costs in the course of the two-year period. And understanding what the priorities are as far as what what's going to remain in the plan and what's not going to remain in, just based on how much, you know, it's going to cost. Do the primary renovations, which could include seismic retrofitting, historic significant upgrades, things like that, or I shouldn't say significant historic upgrades, but just preserving that the the historic fabric of the buildings, and we choose about that route, is really kind of the, what are the, what are the roles of the two bodies that are they're going to be working on this together, the CFD and the ad hoc committee? Because obviously, the the ad hoc committee working with the community is going to come up with game plan. And the the CFD is primarily going to be basically taking whatever is being approved by the ad hoc committee and, you know, floating bonds accordingly. It's just, my concern is, is just making sure that there is a clear path as far as making tweaks and adjustments to the actual scope of the work as we proceed to ensure that we don't get to the end of the day and we may perhaps overcommit it to the community due to cost overruns and and in both, you know, we'll only have a limited amount of money that we can issue. At the same time, we what we want on these bells and whistles, but that may not be realistic based on what we see when we put this out to bid for construction and materials. So I my 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 long, very long-winded statement is really more of a question to the groups, how do we want to handle that particular nuance as far as changing in in the actual costs and how that impacts what we overall want to do for the projects? And what kind of prioritization we want to put on those that 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 may have to fall off on the back end? If, in fact, we are over budget, you know, through the course of our construction for for the two facilities.
So it might be helpful to put back up the document that Jennifer walked through. Because I think that partly, I think that at least helps get to the question being asked.
There you go.
One more there. Because I think, you know, our baseline that we're starting from, right, is the work that Terry and I did with with in that subcommittee with ARG, right? And so when you look on here, you know, define the individual baseline projects and budgets, that's really taking a current look at the final report that came out from ARG, where we we identified kind of the mandatory stuff that we have to get done. You know, really around accessibility and building upgrades that have been identified, right? You know, that report, which, and and the costing that came out of it, which, you know, includes a multiplier to account for overruns and stuff like that, came out to around 11, between 11 and 12 million dollars, right? And we figured after accounting for for the soft costs, for the kind of administrative stuff, that we have up to 22 million to spend. So, you know, I think at this point, at least, we feel pretty confident that we will be able to get those minimum projects done. And, you know, one of the first duties, as you can see here, is going to be coming up with a more current and robust and detailed accounting for those costs. That'll then give us a better idea of, you know, what is left for discretionary to look at some of those other ideas. And I think that's also why we one of the earliest decisions we're making and, you know, also at the recommendation of our team from Racklin Partners is to do the seismic study because we don't want to go through all this work, make all these decisions, and then find out we have to divert money from like discretionary projects, for instance, to do seismic, like, we need to know that now.
I appreciate that, Jason, and I, yeah, I know you guys did a lot of work. And I, my only question was, is if we do get to a point where we do have unanticipated cost increases that go far beyond what we anticipated, and then some decisions need to be made, you know, my question is more of a processes to, and because we're talking about roles, responsibilities of the collective team, what does that look like as far as if we need to make some call some audibles halfway through through this project period?
So I might be able to to add some to that. So also, is it Rushmore, is that the to, your answer, part of your earlier question is escalation, yes. So all the estimates that Jennifer's currently doing, first, we factor in escalation. So in the, to the midpoint of when we anticipate construction being, and so we're actually working, when we work with budgets, we're working in tomorrow's dollars, not today's dollars. So hopefully, we we thwart that off. Secondly, yesterday, Andrew and I, actually, recently, yesterday, Andrew and I were kind of brainstorming on kind of the the end goal on this, knowing that we're going to have this kind of, we've got finite items that we must address, the power life safety, the access issues, and of course, the structural issues. And then we have the the maintenance issues that we want to address and what's left over, as we, as Jason was just kind of touching on, is the the nice to haves. And the way we were looking at that we would be doing is we're going to have estimates for all of the finite. And so we're going to have a pot of money at the end. And we'll be meeting with the committees to to determine really what those items are. And before we even cost them, we're going to prioritize those items. And and then we'll end up with the the prioritization of the items that we have, we'll begin to budget, and we'll come back. We'll come back to the committees and say, this is, this is what we anticipate. Your first five prioritize of your 20 items, we believe the leftover money we can afford is five of them if we do it in this order. However, perhaps if we do it in this order, we can, we can, you know, afford items A, B, not C, but then we can get D, E, and F type of thing. And so we'll we'll can reprioritize once we have an idea on what the cost knowing, because right now we are in somewhat of an unprecedented escalation period in the cost of materials, not labor, the cost of materials. Is, and and mind you, that the cost of materials is about one-third the cost of an actual project. So it's better that we're having a surge in material prices, and it's not all materials, it's certain commodities. But knowing we're in 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 that, we don't really have a crystal ball on on what we're going to be bidding it. And so what Andrew and I were talking about is we'll probably build in some additional items into the scope and and bid them as what we call an add alternate or an additive deduct. So that as we're trying to speculate what the cost of this is going to be two years from today, we'll have a little bit of a cushion to be able to have everyone pretty much on the same page that this is the the base scope that we're definitely going to do. And these are the items that, depending on on what can be afforded, we may have in on that. And so we've got some of a process mapped out, one to protect us against escalation. We're building that into today's budgets. And then a process that we enter into with the team to determine what the priority of the items are. And then a secondary process to bake up, to back up that prioritization, to make us think a second time about it.
Right. Thank you very much for that. That provides clarity. And one of the, I'm obviously, you know, with escalations, the way they are these days materially, it is a little scary. And then the fact that we haven't, we haven't done our seismic analysis yet, and maybe I could just pass this real quickly at the group. So what is the timeframe for that seismic analysis? And, you know, relative to the overall timeline for our bond issuance? So I'm trying to, so obviously, that could be quite a bit of money, but we just don't know yet.
Well, so the seismic analysis is, at this point, is just a, is going to be a report, and we're trying to prioritize that. And so we're we're trying to get an RFP to get those consultants on board to prepare that that study for us. And what that study will do is is tell us what exactly has to be done to the building to seismic upgrade. We have a, in kind of a, an overall report, a tier one or a level one report, and we're going to go for a level three that tells us exactly what needs to be done. And then what we'll do is we'll be able to get a cost on that. And I believe it was either Andrew or Jason, or I think Jason that was touching about that, is we don't want to bring the whole team down the road thinking that we have all this money in the kind of the discretionary area and then find out that that it, half of that pot needs to go to the seismic study on that.
Exactly.
Prioritize that, and that's going to be one of the first things out of the chute. And I know they're already working on the RFP to select the vendor that will prepare that study. And it's a structural engineer that prepares that study.
Yeah, we will be going out to this month's board meeting with that RFP to put that out on the street. So the Board of Trustees will review it at this month's meeting, and then we'll go out as soon as possible. And we'll make it somewhat aggressive so we can get it kind of back and and make that selection as soon as possible. And then engage them, but it's the first thing that we're doing.
Sorry, I would just add that the ARG estimates that we're using as kind of a starting place, they do include costs based on the tier one seismic evaluation and what was identified there as as some items that should be done to correct some seismic issues with the building. So we already have some costs captured there. The tier three will just give us a better idea of whether we need to do more or if we can do it more efficiently. So hopeful that it that it won't increase the cost too much.
Yeah, thank you all for your.
Just to clarify that, that's not more studies, but more seismic work than what's in the ARG cost estimate. And so we'll know that. And it's our, it's our intention to bring, obviously, to bring that person on before the architect so that we can have a developed scope when the architect comes on board.
Yeah, exactly.
Hi, this is Kim. Just, this is also kind of a process question, I guess. So is there, when is the decision point of how much we want to go out on the bond for? Or is there the idea that we're going to go out for the max allowed to us by the voters so that we have this leeway to plan and to add things and to cover, you know, the potential of increased costs? I wasn't, I wasn't sure if I saw that decision point on the roadmap.
So I'm, I'm happy to speak to that, at least, and then invite other other input. So I I think, Kim, that's one of the reasons that we're trying to get some of this cost estimating done first so that the amount that we that we look to bond out is supported by specific costs, right? So I think there are kind of two philosophical approaches you could take to this. One is, well, we're just going to bond the maximum amount, and then we'll figure out how to spend that money. The approach that I think it's a little bit more responsible to take to taxpayers' dollars is let's figure out what we're actually dealing with, let's figure out what that looks like. And then let's, let's reach a consensus on that full amount. So I would imagine that once we get to that, you know, that kind of next along the along the process square that has defined baseline projects and budgets, we'll have a better sense of of what that looks like. And, you know, certainly what we've heard thus far is that we need to, you know, plan for somewhere between 1.5 to 2 million dollars in basically just administrative and functional costs, which leaves us, as Jason said earlier, with a maximum potential building capital project budget of around 22 million dollars. And, you know, I think we need just more information at this point to know what that looks like. Is it 17? Is it 18? Is it 22? Is it time to make some tough decisions about what we want to do or not do? You know, I think all of those choices, the goal from, I think, at least the facilities committee side, is to do all the homework, get all the ducks in a row, find out all the information that we can, and then bring that to the full board with the recommendation of, you know, look, this is what we think makes the most sense. This is the, this is our, this is our best recommendation for our path forward, and then and then take a vote on that. So like all of these big picture decisions that will ultimately be subject to a vote of the full Board of Trustees. I hope, I don't know, does that start to answer your question a little bit? I know that's not a great answer on like when, but I mean, I think we'll know a whole lot more in a couple of months' time.
Right. And so maybe that's my question is, so on that top orange line, are we saying that we're going to be, you know, three or four of those squares over before we're ready to know the definitive amounts that we we need to go out for for the bond? And I'm assuming, and and the bond folk can answer this, is, you know, there's work we do, even though we don't have the final amount yet.
Hi, this is Doug Anderson with Urban Futures. Let me make a couple of general comments. We do have a schedule we're going to go over here in a bit. But based on that sort of preliminary schedule, we would have until the end of September to really nail down the exact bond size. For current purposes, we are assuming that we're going to issue the whole 24 million. So we're going to keep going at that pace until we hear otherwise. But the drop dead as to whether that would could could be reduced or potentially would be sometime around the end of September. So that's kind of a general timeline that we're looking at right now.
Thanks.
And we'll get into our, we can have an overview schedule as well. And so we're sort of looking at September two for an uh, our next round of cost estimating to sort of. Find out where everything sits as far as what our baseline and then what our discretionary projects are at the same time. So I think sometime around September is when, yeah, we'll be ready to make that decision as well as Doug's team.
And then I had a quick question for Rayman about the process for determining the suitability of the, the building for, you know, structural repairs and so on. As you go through this process with the different seismic evaluations and so on, is there a place where. The county building inspectors get involved and start to certify the building as appropriate for these things that we've got planned for? Or does that happen later in the actual building process?
That happens later in the actual building process. So the um, the structural engineer will evaluate it based on the California building code. And um, and so he utilized, and that's basically the same document that a building inspector would use to inspect the building. And ensure that the design, it um, also uh, the project once it's designed would be. A plan checked by a uh, an engineer of the city that utilizes that same building code. So they're all referencing the single document, but at the, the building inspector would not be involved. In the early part of this seismic evaluation.
Okay, great, thanks.
Um, yeah, I mean, as we maybe go back to the questions uh, for this section. Cause I think we might be getting a little bit into some, some bigger timeline and stuff, which I know we'll talk about in just a minute. You know, one thing that I did want to just flag for everybody right now, because I think it's really important that it be said, is. There's a lot of discussion about the main library. What are we going to do? How's it going to work? What's going to happen? Size my questions. It's complicated. It's a historic building. All of that is totally true. And you might be going, how come I haven't heard the words Bob Lucas at this point? And that's because of an underlying um, philosophy that we as a board certainly. And also as the facilities committee have taken, which is. The entire kind of project scope originally identified for Bob Lucas. So top to bottom, facility upgrade, everything that needs to be done to that building getting done. Is not negotiable, like that has to happen, right? Just like we need a new roof for the main library, we have to invest in Bob Lucas in the way that um. That honestly, we, we probably should have done decades ago. So that's why you may be hearing like a lot of main library stuff and not a lot of Bob Lucas stuff. Because that's like all in that baseline needs to happen. Now, there may be other cool discretionary things that will become an option for, for Bob Lucas. If we end up having some, some extra budgetary options to, you know, present to the community. But all of the upgrades that we looked at with ARG, all of those repairs and and changes and ways to make that space um. More, more functional, more public, more usable, more, more exciting. Um, all of those absolutely need to happen. So a lot of the questions around like, are we going to do this? Are we going to do that? The trade offs come from Maine. So I just wanted to say that out loud, we'll kind of hit that point over and over again as we go. But it's just worth bearing in mind that that's, that's why a lot of the discussion about, do we do this? Do we do that? Will be negotiations around what's possible at the main library, not publicist.
And I think before we move away from the, this question slide. Is asking the committee, like for example, the CFD committee members, what kind of information would you like to see coming out of the facilities committee? Um, in terms of like how you're interacting, right? Um, cause I know there's, especially our community members are really interested in knowing what's going on in terms of the building projects. So I don't know if um, the committee members can comment on that as well.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in here. Um, are you talking about just the facilities committee right now, Nikki, or just is it open?
Like the exchange of information a little bit, like what kinds of things the CFD committee would like to see. Especially to your point of the transparency piece, right? You guys are, you have open meetings that we're streaming or will be having in person probably at some point, but.
Yeah. I would say for us, first of all, would be important to make sure that we've got a sufficient number of meetings every, every year. You know, it's to make sure that we're getting information passed on to you effectively and sort of officially to the, to the main board. And um, I saw it might be later in the program about how often we should need and so on. We need to take careful attention to that. And then, you know, having, it occurred to me that just having a separate report from the vendors that we're hiring will be up to four in no time at all here. That show important dates, uh, things that are going to, are supposed to happen, things that might be on the horizon for board approval, et cetera. Just to have kind of a rolling field of view of what's going to happen next month or next quarter and so on, so that we can stay ahead of the, ahead of the curve of that. So I'd like to see that at a minimum. And uh, I think the individual ideas hopefully will percolate a little bit as we talk more about that.
I think also in addition to the overall projected costs, I think that it's important to know when those monies are needed. Because right now we're operating on the assumption that this is going to be one bond issuance. But you know, the information that may come out from the uh, time estimates as well as more specifically when the monies are needed. May lead to a different decision as to maybe more than one bond issuance and and certainly the dollar amounts associated with each one of those bond issuances. So that'd be very helpful to understand that uh, early on as we project, you know, the type of the sizing of the bond. Or bonds.
Nikki, um, I, I heard you, you know, talk about the C, our meetings being Brown Act noticed. And the ad hoc facility committee meetings not be. Is it possible to get the minutes from, you know, maybe there's a communication stream from the ad hoc facilities committee. Whether it's minutes or or, you know, decisions or something that just comes to the CFD on a regular basis. Or maybe there's already going to be some kind of reporting that comes from the um, capital projects manager. Now, I'm not even sure I'm using the right term, but so I think just getting that information for our committee would be great.
Yeah, I agree. And we're meeting weekly with um, Racklin at this point. So I'm sure we could include some kind of report for the, the standing meetings of the CFD committee. You know, just an overview of what's being worked on. That's a good idea.
We've also talked as a facilities committee about, you know, some sort of. Overarching reporting that we'd like to do at various inflection points. Like basically, once we have a lot of the studies back and we know kind of what we're working with. Laying out a bigger report that says, you know, look, here's the, here's the estimating, here's the budget, here's how it all kind of works together. And you know, that may be the point at which, and I know I'm jumping ahead here, but that may be the point at which it makes sense. For example, to schedule another one of these kind of meetings to get together with that document and our um. And our, our expert teams and and say, okay, what do we, what do we want to do with this? Um, but I think, you know, in addition to kind of consistent, regular information, there are going to be a couple sort of really important moments where we say, okay, this is. This is what we're doing. Let's, let's get, let's get together on this or, or make some changes. Um, and we want to have reporting around that as well, so that it's documented, but also so that, you know, anybody, those are all public documents, right? So anybody who's interested or has um, has feedback, has an opportunity to review those as well.
I would just ask as follow up since to the other board members who, who aren't on the ad hoc committee. You know, if there's anything specific that you would like to see in the, the, the board reports that we've been doing so far. Obviously, like that's the minimum reporting out what's going to happen. But you know, if you feel like there's any, anything more you'd like to see more detail on or anything like that for the time being, you know, that would be helpful too.
And actually, that's a slide a couple from now. So maybe, maybe we could transition into the next part of the meeting, uh, which is our timelines. So we can move forward. Yeah, there we go. Um, so I'll turn it over now to Doug so he can talk about the general bond issuance schedule.
Thank you, Nikki. Okay, we did put down some uh, thoughts on these items that will occur during our bond issuance process. And by the way, we will put out a detailed financing schedule. Once we have our underwriter on board. We'll compare notes with them and and put down a very detailed schedule with dates. So for now, we've sort of put in the week of uh, you know, July, August, we'll be preparing documents. Uh, part of our bond issuance process, it will be important for this issue is to get a nice bond rating. So we'll spend several weeks on a rating package, a presentation, we'll make a presentation standard and pours. And then uh, once we have our bond rating, uh, we'll be able to put out the preliminary official statement. Uh, and this is the offering document that'll go to the bondholders or potential bondholders. Um, and that'll take some time. We want to make sure we have that uh, wrapped up as well. Um, so we're talking about, uh, as I mentioned, probably selling the bonds, not till the first week of October. And so that's why I mentioned, I think by the end of September. We would want to know, are we still issuing the full 24 million? Do we need to reduce that for any reason? But for now, I think our assumption is that uh, you know, based on what I'm hearing from cost estimates from a year or two ago, we'll probably. Uh, need that full amount, but we'll wait to see. And we can certainly change that right up to the last minute, but for now that's our assumption. So it's a three or four month process. This is a, a reasonably uh, like sort of a reasonable schedule. We, we could accelerate this and if, for instance, if we saw interest rates ticking up. Uh, in a dramatic fashion, we could probably tighten this up by a few weeks to make sure we don't miss a good market. Uh, we don't anticipate that, but we can certainly move quickly if we need to. Uh, but I think it's a reasonable schedule and again, we'll have a lot more detail to it and be able to share that with everyone once uh, we nail that down.
All right, thank you.
And I will. I just wanted you to comment if you could on the favorability of that period in terms of time for actually launching a bond initiative. Didn't you say on Reddit that that's a pretty good time of year to come out with the bond, is that right?
Yeah, some of the uh, underwriter proposals that we received were talking specifically about months that you sell bonds. And they're sort of focused on inflows and outflows to various uh, municipal funds. And uh, and they've noticed that certain months are better than others. And basically what they were saying was our timing uh, would look good based on this schedule, so.
And Doug, I'm not sure if this is the right forum for this conversation, but part of, once we have an established budget. Um, as we know, this is a two-year project or or longer, I guess, three years through the end of construction. Clearly that means we don't need all of the money on, you know, in October, the date that we know how much we're going to need through the life of the project. When are things will be able to provide the group is a uh, a timeline or a schedule on how much money we're going to need uh, each month. As we kind of project the schedule through construction. So I'm not sure um, if there's any benefit to selling the bond in series or selling it all at once. But we'll be able to give you a timeline versus dollars um, on, on how much we'll need when. Because really the bulk of the dollars will not come until we start construction on the project and and that could be a, a year from now.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And a couple of thoughts on that. One, we do have, and we've talked with Nora, our bond counsel about this, there is sort of a general. Three-year expenditure outlook that the issuer would need to state that they uh, hope to expend most of that money within three years. So that's one thing to think about. The other is uh, you know, interest rates are very low right now, but I think everyone's anticipating that they are going to go up. Sometime they, they'll have to at some point. Um, so I, I mean, I would sort of tend to lean towards issuing it all now. One thing we can do, once we have the proceeds, we can get a uh, sort of a construction investment account. Uh, you can get bids from investment providers. And if you give them a monthly schedule like Richard, you mentioned, uh, we could probably get a pretty good earnings interest rate and park some of that money until we do need it. So that's something else to think about.
And that three-year period, I'm familiar with that, but remind me, is that funds committed or funds uh, expended?
Uh, I'm, I'm going to ask Nora, our bond counsel, to let us know about that.
Yeah, this is Nora. Hopefully you can all hear me, okay? Um, so it is a reasonable expectation to spend 85% of the proceeds within three years.
And.
On the data, on the date of issuance, so.
Yeah, okay. And I don't think that'll be an issue.
Any other questions for Doug around the bond issuance schedule?
This is Kim. So and this is more of a, how do the two parts fit together? So because I looked over the packet, I think I saw that we get into the design phase in about January, I think. Is what I saw on one of the schedules. So is, I don't know how long the design phase is. So that's why I'm just kind of, again, kind of looking, do we, if we're getting the bonds by November, but potentially we're what, six months away? Or maybe the design phase is only a few months. I don't know that much about it.
No, so I think that's the point I was, I was making is that we'll provide a schedule on how much money we need uh, at one point. But because the bulk of the dollars gets spent or 80% of the dollars or so gets spent at construction, which is really the last phase of this. We don't need the bulk of the dollars until then. So the design, design and permitting phase, you know, could be nine, nine months to a year. So we may not be talking about starting construction. Andrew is kind of, well, I think the schedule that you have, Andrew, is only for phase one. But um, we may not be starting construction until, you know, the winter of 22 or, you know, uh, December of 22. And so that was the point I was making with Doug. Uh, but if the conditions are most favorable and we anticipate that interest rates will go up. It might be the benefit to the community that we sell all the bonds now and put them in this investment type account that he's speaking of. And then we have to keep, and so what we were talking about this 85% expenditure, keep our eye on the fact that those bonds need to be uh, uh, expended. Within three years of the date of issuance or at least 85% of those. So we're conscious of all, all, there are all these moving parts. I don't anticipate the whole process taking longer than three years, so it does not concern me. But it is out there and um, we know that in construction, things always change.
Any other questions around bond issuance? No? Okay, so we'll turn it over now to Andrew for the next schedule. And I think we're going to bring up the last page of the package because it's more clear, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. I think if we could just shoot down to the last page, it would be helpful.
Thank you. I couldn't, I couldn't read the printout at all.
All part of my master plan, really.
Or.
I think you guys are going to do it. I can load it up if you give me a second, but I believe it's already in the presentation. I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's the last page of the PowerPoint. Diego, can you bring it up?
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm bringing it up right now.
Going to have to panic there for a second.
Could we zoom in anymore or no?
Uh, give me one second.
That work to start with, Andrew?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I can walk through it. I, of course, I'm familiar with it, so it's easy for me to kind of walk through. Um, unfortunately, it might be more uh, tricky for everybody that's attending in this meeting. But um, really this schedule is kind of a, it's a, just so that we're all on the same page, this is kind of a high level outline draft schedule. Kind of based on just getting into this project and reviewing it from the master plan and sort of what our expectations are. Our initial meetings with our ad hoc group and, and this is going to be revised as we go. It's going to be kind of a living document. So just putting that out there for everybody to understand. Um, that none of this is really set in stone. And so in a lot of ways, it mirrors what Jennifer sort of walked us through in regards to the roadmap. Um, a lot of the initial activities are really going to be working um, with our group. And confirming what the baseline projects are to really make sure that we're hitting all the structural, functional and accessible requirements that are really promised to the community. And from there, we're going to kind of go and build on that and find out what kind of discretionary projects that we could do. Um, that really kind of meets sort of the goals of the library to be sort of future-proof and be really a, a space for the community. Um, for years and years to come. And so those are kind of our, our two goals that we're going for. And so right now, um, we're right here, well, I guess you can't see my cursor, but you know, we're right in the special board meeting line in the number eight. And so we've done a lot of bit of planning going into this, just sort of coming up with this outline schedule, coming up with some uh, outline budgets. And then talking about how we want to do our focus. And then talking about how we want to do our focus groups to get the community involved and just make sure they're part of the process. From here, we're really going to just be continuing to evaluate the baseline projects and the budgets and the discretionary projects in the budget. At the same time, it's kind of parallel with item number seven, which is the bond sale structure. And so we knew there'd be about a 90-day window for planning that. And so that's going to go a little bit longer out into September. We're sort of showing it mid-August right now. And so we just seen Doug schedule for kind of the first time this week, and so we'll be revising this as well. And so right around that time at the end of August, September, hopefully we'll have a real clear idea of what our budget is, what our, our scope is, what the bond sale structure is going to be, and kind of come together again at that point and go from there. And I don't know if you want to either scroll down a little bit more from there, but the next, and these are kind of in process too in parallel. So some of these ones we've already talked about, going over contracts and RFQs. A lot of that's been done already. And once we get done with this kind of special board meeting, we'll be going out for our first RFQs, RFPs for structural and hazmat. And that's this light blue one as well. We continue this sort of process to make sure we get all of the different vendors on board. A lot of what we're going to be doing is kind of getting a pool of vendors sort of pre-approved so that we can do certain studies that are required based on how we're identifying what the finalized scope is. So there may be a handful of vendors that are approved. We may or may not end up using them. And that's just sort of giving you a kind of a heads up on that in advance. And then the big thing will be sort of rolling down into sort of item number 35, which is kind of our architect procurement or architects, depending on how the projects sort of develop in the next couple of months. And so we're looking at going off for the RFQ for the architectural services, if you wanted to scroll down a little bit more. And you could even zoom out a little bit because I don't know if they need each individual one of these details. A lot of these are sort of how we want to go for the RFQ. How does it line with board meetings to make sure that we're, we're as efficient as possible in making, getting our agendas in for board approval. But the architect selection is going to be happening, starting kind of midsummer, as we'll be developing the RFQ, making sure once we kind of have our scope identified, we can sort of begin really identifying that in an RFQ, sort of a packet, so that the architects that are responding will know exactly what we're looking for. And from there, we'll hopefully have board-approved architects in sometime around November is what we're looking at for that November board meeting to have our architects on board. And then if it's an architect or architects, we'll be looking at sort of matching them with the project or projects. And then, you know, there'll be contracts involved and dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And that's why we think design will really kick off right around January 3rd. This schedule is sort of, the bar chart is kind of hard to see all at once, but that's kind of what we're looking at as far as, as big picture identifying what we really need to do as far as structural, functional and accessible. And then what we really want to do, blending all those together and then choosing the architect and then really kicking off design by the end of the year, early next year, is really kind of what the schedule is at this point.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Other questions around this schedule? Or thoughts?
One of the things that I might, I'm sorry, that I kind of go lost over is that we are looking at different ways that we could potentially do some quick start projects, something that we could kind of give back to the community earlier in the job. So they're not seeing that their, you know, their taxes are being hit and yet they're still two way, two years away from something. And so one of those might be like the Bob Lucas, right? So we know that that scope is going to be slightly smaller because the facilities are smaller. But we also know that all of the stuff that we really want to do there is kind of required just to make sure that that remains a functional library for the community. So that's one that maybe we could even identify early, find out how the funding looks, bring an architect down even earlier in that project and potentially go out and have something for the community to see. And then maybe we stagger the two projects so that we're not doing everything at once and the whole library system is kind of closed down. And so we are looking at potentially how we can phase in what we're calling a quick start project, or maybe it'd be an early start project, and that might be something as simple as the Bob Lucas. And so that's kind of in our schedule right now to identify that as well.
I think that's a great idea. Any other questions or thoughts around this roadmap or cover project schedule?
I just had a quick question about line 34. And forgive me if you explain this and I missed it, but it says obtain reports. And does that mean the reports for, you know, the building integrity and structure and so on, or is that something else?
The structural one we have sort of up by line item 29. And so that'll be kind of our initial one. And then it's really just sort of a placeholder for 34 is just when we have other vendors on. And so that, I think if you scrolled out, it's probably a much longer one that goes well into the future on the overall bar chart, because not all of the, so it's that last light blue item. And so you'll see it scrolls almost all the way to the end, because some of this will be happening right up to when we have an architect on board and it'll be different if we're bringing in a technology consultant, you know, per se, to see how we can really future-proof the facilities maybe or something like that, right? So we won't need that. It won't be critical early on, but maybe we will want to have that information for whatever architect gets on board. And so that, those reports are really fluid. And right now, it's just projected to happen late in the year into next year.
Okay, great. I was trying to scroll over, but it wouldn't move.
Yeah, I know. I apologize. I could have condensed this, the timeline on the top and made it a little more usable, but.
All right. Anything else? All right.
I'll just, sorry, let me just add one thing, Nikki. So just, so for the, for the board, just to kind of preview some of the stuff that you guys will be seeing that is the direct result of this approach. As Andrew mentioned, you know, one of the goals is to identify all the potential kinds of studies that we might need and issue some, some RFQs so that basically we have, if you will, a library of, of potential, of potential consultants and vendors who can help us answer some of these questions as we need them. We may not need all of them. In fact, we almost certainly will not need all of them. But it makes sense to kind of have all of those, all of those resources at our disposal early in the process for the same reason that we've said, you know, let's get this seismic study done quickly and, and right out of the gate so that we're not finding out, you know, in January of 2022, that, for example, like the sewer lines aren't going to work because they're really old and they can't handle, you know, all the modernization that has to take place. So just kind of getting all of that happening sooner. So we'll see in the coming months as a board, a number of RFQs that will allow us to, you know, sort of select and identify people who can kind of be on call to answer those questions as they come up so that we're not delaying the process unnecessarily every time we hit a potential question.
Yeah, excellent point, Katie.
I got your reference about the library.
Yeah. Well done. I did too.
You know, tip, tip your waitress. I'll be here all week.
All right. Anything else? Okay, so we'll move on to the next slide. So this is kind of touching back on what we started to discuss earlier in terms of reporting and communication best practices. So the questions that we're posing, and I really want the committee members as well as, you know, our trustees to think about what information would be helpful to see in a board report on a monthly basis from each committee? Kinds of information you want us to be providing. Also, what are major points of interest or important priorities that you'd like to be informed of? And if you have a concern, question or issue, what's the appropriate channel of communication to follow? And that could be, you have a neighbor that's upset about, let's say it's the special tax lien that we talked about, or they're not happy with something that they see in terms of the, the construction or the project. What's the best way to direct that flow of communication so that we're providing as much information as people need? So I'll float these questions out. What kinds of things would we like to see?
I think for the public, percentage completion based on, you know, both facilities. And I think it's always good for public to understand where they, where we are at any given time, where we estimate as far as overall completion. And I think also for at least the CFD, any kind of change orders. Obviously, that's going to be public, but we're going to make sure that those are, they're so, are well vetted as well.
We're not going to have any, Rushmore. Just kidding.
Okay, that's right. It's going to be under budget ahead of schedule. That's right. Positive feelings.
I'm an optimist, you know?
We've been studying the bullet train on everything not to do.
There you go.
One thing, oh, sorry, go ahead, Terry. I apologize.
Well, just, it's just a singular idea, but, and it doesn't really relate to the question almost. But it would be nice to, as soon as possible, get in front of the town council on our presentation or Ocona or, you know, other places like that to give sort of an update to the community at those locations about what's going on and what they can expect. So that, that sort of thread of public communication, I think, needs to be thought out. I'm not quite sure where the responsibility for that might, might fall. Maybe all of us as trustees and administrators. But I certainly think getting as much of the message out as we can, you know, as early as we can, practically early as we can, would be a good way to go.
Yeah. And to that point, Terry, I mean, one of the next steps that we will be undertaking is a facilities committee. And we didn't really talk about it much today, is the formation of this community-focused group. So for Brown Act rules, like that does function a little bit differently than our full citizen members who are part of the CFD committee. But the plan is to invite representatives from town council, from, you know, various other groups and constituencies around town to be part of that so that we have a kind of open channel of communication with at least one representative from those groups on an ongoing basis. And hopefully, they can help us with that work as well, right? So that it's not just the library saying like, please be aware of this, but there, there are counterparts in our, in our partner organizations who are involved in that. And then thinking ahead as well about, in the same kind of way that there will be decision inflection points for the board, there will be decision inflection points for the community and thinking about how we can, whether those are town hall meetings or, you know, getting people information online or sketches or options or really all of the above, but ways to build in community feedback. It's always easier to get people to react to something that exists than to ask them to sort of deal with really abstract plans, which is unfortunately a little bit where we are now. But I think your point is really well made, that like, look, this is our basic timeline. This is kind of what we're expecting. Stay tuned for more in, you know, the fall or early winter or whatever that is. Because we're going to be coming back to you to ask your opinion on this, on these questions. I think it's a really important point.
To that end, I think it would be with, specifically for the report, and that I would like to see if there are any, I guess, barriers in terms of like community concerns or some places where there's pushback or things that we've had to, or the committees have had to put a pin in or that's out of scope. I think it's just going to be interesting to see that as well as how those problems are solved or if it needs to be an agenda item, you know, for the Board of Trustees to participate in the problem-solving process. I think those are the only notes that I wrote. Yeah. Oh, oh, if there are any needs or resources that are not met within the committees and with, you know, the vendors or the, the community members in terms of, you know, human capital, in terms of, you know, just what kind of needs or resources that are not being currently met. Good idea.
Okay. Any other thoughts on monthly basis, any other major points? Other board members?
I've got two suggestions that I'd like to throw out for your guys' feedback. One is that, as we've discussed several times, like the committees are structured and function a little bit differently, one being a standing committee, one being an ad hoc committee. But as with all things, like the Brown Act is the floor, not the ceiling. So if there are points in time where it feels like, just like today, it would be helpful to have a public meeting, we can absolutely always do that, right? The, the obstacle to that is, is non-existent. It's just us saying like, well, we're going to do this one as a public meeting and invite everybody. And so, you know, as we go along, as you're reading reports on a monthly basis, if there's something that you see and you're like, you know, this seems like a big deal, I would like to go to that facilities committee meeting or watch it or whatever it is, we can always set it up as a public meeting. Doing that every single week is a little bit challenging in terms of keeping the, the process moving. But there's absolutely no reason we can't, we can't build that in. The other thing that I would, I would say is that, you know, all of these, all of these projects are accelerating and there's a lot of work. And I know that, you know, everybody's, as Nikki said at the beginning, wearing a bunch of hats. So whether it's in a board report or even just orally, you know, if there are particular things that feel like important lessons learned, like, hey, we learned something really critical about the way bond issuances work and we really need everybody to know that, maybe just flag that in a board report with a timestamp in the video, like, watch these five minutes of the CFD committee meeting, even if you don't have time to watch the whole thing. Or, hey, read this, you know, read this one particular section of the report, just to, just to really flag for everybody's attention. Of course, we're all reading the entire board report every month, everybody's, but sometimes we need a little bit of extra help. So I think flag those things that folks who are in the weeds have noticed as, oh, wow, that's a, that's a really important thing we learned this month.
And I did, oh, sorry, go ahead, Terry.
Button in there. But, and this is really a question for Rushmore, I think, and you, Nikki. It seems to me as if you're starting to sequester some of the expenses regarding this in a zone in the financial report so that we can, it'd be interesting to take a look at what our expenses are starting to be from the people that we're hiring and so on. And there's going to be outlays of money that start to come, just in a little section of that. And as I recall, Rushmore, you had already sort of started down that road in terms of the formatting of the financial report. Is that right?
Well, I mean, basically what has happened so far is the, the library district itself has, has and continues to incur expenses associated with this project that are reimbursable for the bond. But ultimately, the, the budget itself beyond that for, you know, expenditures associated with these two rehab projects will be under kind of a separate budgetary document in and of itself, if I'm not mistaken, Nikki, is that correct, right?
Well, we created a separate column that will just show up with the budget each month that will, will show expenditures by line CFD. And we're actually going to include capital, it's, it's a capital projects and grants and donations fund. So the things that, you know, are not going to be consistent in the budget year over year. But again, the board will see that those expenditures, as they're happening.
Yeah, but I think, but to Terry's point, I mean, there's, there was kind of a, there's a macro level as far as expenditures that the district is incurring. And then, you know, on that third column, excuse everyone else who has not seen the, the budget. But there's going to, I think there's going to be a need for, you know, detailed, you know, budgetary lineups associated with all these expenditures associated with, with the construction projects that aren't necessarily reflected in any kind of line item or, or maybe they shouldn't necessarily be in the annual budget. They should be even a separate companion piece to it because you'll have the expenditures associated on behalf of the district for the project. And then you get the project itself. And those, those are obviously separate lineups altogether. So there should be specific lineends, a budgetary document that we should be able to review as well, to Terry's point. And, you know, I assumed that that was going to be taking place, that we'd actually have an ongoing view of that. And that kind of goes back to the percentage of completion. And of course, where we are as far as overall expenditures, and that's critical, of course, for achieving, you know, our percentage required within three years.
Yeah, it sounds to me like something I would work with Racklin on producing. So you, so the board would have this separate document that outlines all the budget expected as related to the building projects.
It would, it would have to be, and that's committed to be a public document as well as companion piece. And, you know, that's obviously going to be seen by both the ad hoc committee as well as, you know, the CFD. Because obviously the CFD has the fiduciary responsibility to ensure that we're meeting that, that expenditure timeline as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point, Terry. Thank you. Any other feedback on other things we'd like to see reported out? Either to the CFD committee or the full Board of Trustees? And thank you, Camila, for your points as well. And thank you, Camila, for your points as well.
Is there, um, once, once we have the scope of work identified is are the, are the modifications or the, the work going to be significant enough to be, to be able to have a before and after, or is it just because they're not cosmetic, these are structural? The reason I'm thinking this is that sometimes when you're, when the community is incurring costs, it'd be nice to be, to see the projected, you know, project at the conclusion of the money being spent.
I mean, I can speak to that a little bit. Of course, as we get into construction, we're going to have much more robust presentations that we can put together and there will be absolutely many photographs taken before, during and after, so we can really show the extent of the project. Absolutely.
But will there be something that we actually, what we project is going to look like afterwards?
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly task the architect with an, a rendering of a completed project. And, and since the exterior is really more of a restoration, perhaps it might be something on the interior, right? The exterior, something on the interior. Since the exterior won't look much different than what it looks like today, at least that's the goal. But certainly the, you know, some of the, the fun stuff that we're going to be able to do on the inside. And we can certainly get that into some renderings, you know, during the design phase. So that could, you know, that could happen early next year.
That's great. It'd be helpful for the community to be able to see that upfront.
Of course, be posted on your website so that the community has access to it.
I think we can even look at some of the stuff that's even hidden, you know, some of the structural upgrades, right? We could actually put together diagrams that really are showing how we're protecting this for the future as well.
Yeah.
There can be some interesting diagrams.
We want to be careful about that though, because we don't want to make it seem as though we've had this, you know, an unsafe building. All this time. So we want to be careful in how we address that issue. So.
Good point.
Right. I see Amy's hand.
Uh, this is coming back to the, just talking about the town council and, you know, different groups. Wanting to give them some updates on what's happening. I'm happy to reach out to the, my colleagues on the town council and to query them about what they, what they might be interested to hear or how frequently. And one of the things I think that the council is interested in doing is trying to collaborate a bit more with a lot of our community organizations for communication. So there might be ways to bundle, if you will, some of that outreach with groups like Akona or, you know, other groups. But if you'd like, I'm happy to talk to my colleagues on the executive committee and get a sense of what kinds of information they might be interested to hear. Well, not what types of information, but maybe how often or when they might be interested to hear from us about the process and where we stand at any given time.
That would be, that would be terrific, Amy. That would be wonderful. And also, you know, as you're having that conversation, if you could maybe solicit their feedback on the willingness of, certainly you are already representing the town council, you know, robustly and you work on the CFD committee. But as we put together this community focus group, we would like to invite the town council to send a rep to that who can kind of be involved in a more consistent way, just so that there's somebody who kind of is, you know, participating as we go along. So if maybe the executive committee would like to start thinking about that, of course, we'll have like a formal invitation and a letter and a description and all of that, but just to plant the seed and, and get people thinking about who might be willing to, to step into that role and, and what sort of interest is, is there? That would be terrific.
Sure. I will, I will do that. Thanks.
Okay. Any other thoughts or feedback on reporting or communication channels? No? All right. Um, so I believe we're into our last section. Are we actually going to finish early? My gosh, that'd be amazing, huh? Which is future meetings. So how often or frequently do these joint meetings need to take place? What are everybody's thoughts? Is it quarterly, six month, every six months as, as needed, like Katie mentioned with specific inflection points? How much time do we anticipate is needed for these meetings and can meetings be scheduled or should they be scheduled as special meetings? So these are some of the questions that we wanted to throw out there and see what everybody thinks. And I will point out that the CFD committee has a standing meeting every second Wednesday at three, 3pm. So that is a, a meeting that happens monthly. Right now, facilities committee, we're meeting every week with Racklin. So again, we want to be sensitive to the fact that we're loading everybody's schedules already. So any thoughts on this?
I think quarterly would be fine for right now. And then we can modify thereafter, but I think that the initial the initial six months is going to be critical. And I could, I could envision even seven, it even more frequently, but I think for, for everyone's sake, probably quarterly would, would be manageable for everyone. And it provides sufficient amount of of updated information to review and decision points that need to be made.
Well, especially when you think three months from now with September, which is what sounds like it's going to be a big month in terms of both bond issuance and cost estimating related to the building projects.
Right. And I would suggest the first couple will be probably two hours and then thereafter that we can modify, you know, accordingly to one hour or every six months. But I think the, I think we're probably going to have at least three to four quarterly meetings that will last two hours based on all the information that we're going to have to be looking at.
Nikki, this is Kim. I was just wondering, given the deadlines in September and when things might have to go to the full board, you know, will it be September or does it, is it closer to the end of August? It just sounds like there might be a lot of things all coming together right around that point. But yeah, that sounds like the next time we need to get together.
Yeah, I could probably talk more closely with Andrew and Doug to figure out what they anticipate is the right time. And then I'll work with Diego to set up either late August, early September as our next meeting date. With a plan for every three months unless, you know, we might decide in September that we need to meet sooner than that again, depending on what we're dealing with at that time. Does that sound good to everyone? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And of course, like obviously, you know, we'll have all of us at our monthly Board of Trustees meetings. If other things come up, you know, more frequently, but I, you know, I also want to just underscore the value of having our community committee members as well as our, our consultants and experts here with us. So want to be respectful of everybody's time, but it sounds like I think, I think that's a really good suggestion, Rushmore, that at least quarterly will be, will be a good, a good starting point. And if we need to do more than that, we can. But I think that's going to keep us in, in pretty good working order.
I also think that just carving out a little time or section for, you know, regular board meetings is a good way to go to, to really, for, for us at least, anybody who's watching to stay on top of things as well. I mean, I already envisioned that more robust report from the CFD committee about what all these vendors are doing, right? Every month or so on. And get that out in board meetings so that people can get a general sense of our momentum. I really think that's what it's about right now is what's our momentum? And, you know, we've got two different cars, if you will, going down the street right now with the two committees, just making sure that we're in sync on what's going on.
Yep. Okay. So I think that's all we had. Katie, is there anything else that you were hoping we'd cover today?
No, I mean, I think, I think this was the big goal is to get everybody on the same page and get some consensus around what our next three to six months look like. So, you know, I'm, I'm happy to open the floor if there are any other comments or questions or, you know, thoughts that folks want to share at this point. But I think we've really achieved all the, all the goals we had for today's conversation.
Anyone have anything else?
I just want to thank everybody for fighting time on a Thursday afternoon to get us all together.
Absolutely.
I just had Bridget text if she can comment. Should I have her call?
Ideally, yes, please.
All right. I know she's watching, so.
Hi, Bridget.
Call myself.
It's a Brown Act thing. Yeah, we'll hold you up to the speaker.
Do you think the Brown Act people ever envisioned the, the world we live in today?
Probably not. Yeah, probably not.
Wild times.
I just noticed. Give me one sec.
So as Nikki's, as Nikki's doing that, um, I think just two quick kind of best practice reminders, since we're talking a little bit about the product anyway. Back to our previous conversation about if something comes up, if somebody has a question, if, you know, you have a neighbor with a concern or anything like that, best practice on that is always just to direct it to Nikki. Direct it to the library director. She, as you guys will recall from that information flow diagram, is in the middle of all these conversations. And will have the latest and most up to date information on what's happening in all the different, all the different cars. Do you use, do you use that analogy as she hops madly between them? So do just forward those to Nikki so that we can get a consistent process there. And then for all of us who are either trustees or CFD committee members, just remember we're going to keep following all of those Brown Act best practices, making sure if we're sending stuff by email that we're BCCing. And that we're restricting those conversations to, to public and, you know, open meetings and all the, all the good stuff that we all know how to do. But sometimes when there's a bunch of questions flying around, it can get confusing. So just keep that kind of front of mind as, as we go and as it starts to get a bit more complex.
Bridget said she will comment at a future meeting.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. Well, if there is nothing else, then it just remains to me to thank everyone for being here with us today and sharing your thoughts and your, your feedback. We really, really appreciate it. We've got an exciting year ahead of us. And I know that by the time we're at this point in 2022, we will all have learned so much that we won't even be able to remember what it felt like to, to be where we are now. So thank you so much. We'll see you again soon and I will, unless there's an objection, call us adjourned at 3:46pm. Thanks so much, everybody.
And thanks, everybody. Nice to see you.